Take it from here.
All right, apologize for technical delay. It looks like our live stream is not working tonight. But we are recording and we will have this up as our typical recording afterwards. So this is the February council meeting for the city of Nowland, February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, seven oh five P M. And I call the meeting to order. Please join us. So thank you. We will be taking role. We have one member joining us electronically, Eric Ringo, I think we're written Mary. Should be joining us and because of the federal requirement, Mary's been sitting here right now and moving back north. Or heading back north. She will not be voting on any of the items tonight, but she will be joining in. She will comment on the items, ask questions. But we will not be asking to devote since she's in good presence with me. Administrator, would you please call work? Is there Mayor Philon here? Councilmember Ringo?
Present.
To the audience, if you had something you wanted to say during our open mic time, if you have any feedback. Look for amendments or approval of the agenda. I would like to make an amendment to the agenda tonight. Item number three of the presentation, Matt Orlando, who is president of external therapy content. We're going to move him way down on the list. And I would like to tie his presentation with the first item that new business. So we'll move him to ten. B one. Do we have other items? Other amendments to the agenda.
Councilmember Brian, what does it look like to me? First one will be to take full of the agenda item. The uprising hire of Amy Hanson and move that down to. Agenda item nine D under administrator's updates since she's here tonight. Then we can have a talk to, you can have a chance to introduce yourself. The other change I would like to make just because it's a point of clarification is one to decide consent agenda item C. I won't have a question and Mary can probably provide where the best place to do that. I don't have a question about approving the bike and the staff, but it's all questionable what we're doing with. A lease agreement. There's a question I have about that. I don't know where we could make it that separate issue or move the whole agenda down.
Mary?
Mr. Mayor. There was a correction submitted to staff over the weekend, removing number seven from the lease agreement. So that is, that was removed. So if that is what councilmember Brian is questioning, that's been. Updated with city staff. So that can be crossed off on within your packet.
All right, so we've moved item three and we've moved item four D. Any other amendments to the agenda? And hearing none, I want to accept the motion to approve the agenda as model, Mr. Mayor.
Thinking I'm watching to approve the agenda that I'm commending.
Motion, councilmember Brian. Councilmember Flattow. Motion to councilmember Flattow. The other stepping. Hearing none, all those in favor, I have a saying I, I, post. Right, floor editors. Scott Schwartz. And the podium please. How would you please that? Give us your name, your address, and your piece.
Fair, councilmembers, audience. My name is Scott Schwartz and I'm my average sixteen six, zero nine, on my workway, Oklahoma, Minnesota. You're wondering still bro guy doing here in B. So reason I came is I just ended four, one year, one term, four years at I S D fifteen schools. And at the end of our, my time there, we, we had a lot of leadership changes, a lot of that changes. So bottom line is we're kind of confused. On one of the elements that's inside of Nowland, and that is the bar none facility that they, we have as a. Is a teaching educational facility for students and kids that are, have really had some difficult, we've been locked for that. So as part of that, we had, they had agreements there, but we, and they take it down each year, but they, we understand, and this is why I'm here, because we're confused. This, do we need a permit for the greenhouse that goes through the city? We used to have a greenhouse. And we think we need a permit from the city of Nowland to do that, but we're not sure. So we don't, because of the leadership changes and the management changes, we're afterwards. You know, several fallen fire department, make sure it doesn't burn down, all that. So. I mean, you're just the kind of, I knew you had some new changes and new councilmembers. So I thought myself, they asked me to come up and say, hey, you let them know who you are and. The mayor has kindly answered my email about who I am in terms of my name and my email address and my number. So is there anything that I can do to help facilitate that or help clear up the confusion and what it is that's working? So if you can help a school to figure that out, we'd like to get the greenhouse coming back to court this morning and means a lot of other values to that area. Thank you.
And I will say, Scott, if you can call the administrator, we have some answers on that.
Okay.
And it has been an issue because the greenhouse doesn't need to be permitted.
Yeah.
And because it's associated with the school, which we can't find a permit for, that's been the hope. We can discuss that further, but it's confusing to a few.
Okay.
And I know with the transition of the volunteers of America.
More.
Yeah. But yeah, so you could, Scott, do you have a card?
I do.
Yeah, yeah, I get what you're talking about. Okay, and we'll get this straightened out as best we understand. At least we want to have that open communication with the school. Thank you for that. Bringing that to our attention.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
To approve consent agenda as amended.
Right. Motion to approve consent agenda, as I mentioned. Very fine. Motion is second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor. Approving consent agenda as amended to run the. First of all. Let me run through it because we typically do that for people that aren't here. Consent agenda items tonight is approved of a city council meeting minutes from a regular meeting January tenth, one two three, two 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 three. And. Prove up claims January tenth, September twenty twenty three, and a treasurer's report. And we see it's a civil revolution, appointing twenty twenty three Nowland farmers market manager and coordinator. Offholding their stipends, improving the municipal staff support for the market. Having been was moved for discussion, item E is approval of resolution approving signatures to deputy Wisconsin, candidate, many happening. But enough was approved of resolution accepting property association store for donation. And D was approval of revolution for education, company of five with the living in society. And then H was approved for December twenty twenty two financial book for more year. And that is on consent agenda, and a motion is second, all those in favor. Let's take a by the saying I, 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 post, motion here. I have no engineering items, and we're a part of our. So when you're at the podium, because we have this new all recording devices here, so please speak mildly. Trying to, had a couple residents that said it was a little hard to hear last. Want to make sure that it doesn't pick up as well as our old microphone.
Mayor Council, I tend not to have that problem in my life. Sent to the program. I'm free early meeting tonight. I do have the January fire department report. Now that we're gaining a couple of years of data as a staple of our department, I thought it would be nice to strip down our reports a little bit. And we can show what the annual changes year to year. This formula will allow us to track that through an extended year period because we have few solid years in the world. We'll be doing those two years, but as time goes on, we'll be able to increase these graphs until a longer time. So we'll start off with a few of the charts. For January, our response time was eleven minutes and fifty nine seconds. If we look back to twenty twenty-two, that's about a four minute eight second reduction or overall response time is still the same. With that, we also saw sixty-three percent reduction in calls for service from thirty-three down to twelve for the month of January. And thankfully, February continues that same trajectory with a little bit still on.
Was that called tonight?
That was for cigarettes. Our large number of firefighters remains relatively stable. We did see a point three reduction. We really don't get too concerned when we start to see that number creep up more around you. So we'll really see kind of that fraction of a reduction.
They're having a bar.
I'm sorry.
It looks traumatic in the bar.
It does, it does. And our distribution of fire alarm versus EMS drones now then remains a little bit unique. We still are a little bit more heavy with our fire runs compared to our EMS ones. So we have fifty, roughly fifty percent of our calls for a month of January were fire related runs and forty-one percent were EMS.
I mean, they fire related, what would that, what would make that?
Fire alarms, actual fires. We categorize any vehicle accidents as a fire run. This typically our primary responsibility is traffic control and execution. The EMS piece comes a little bit secondary of those two components that require, grass fires, check burns.
An EMS would be excellent.
Any metal devices, right? Shortest red, pain. And then in our standard format, just a brief overview for the month of January overall. For the month of January twenty twenty-three, the fire department responded twelve incidents, three lost than the previous month. With an average response time of eleven minutes and fifty nine seconds, which is a minute and thirty-two second decrease from the seventh. The average number of firefighters attending calls for service was three point three for the month, and the fire department reports no dollar loss for fires during the month. Or center grammatical errors. On January ninth, the fire department responded, reported a person not breathing on one eight eight zero zero block of the Post Street. On arrival, it was determined that the patient was deceased and all the lifesaving interventions were high speed. On the morning of January tenth, the fire department was dispatched for two separate vehicle accidents that morning. The first incident was at the intersection of Viking and St. Francis Boulevard. The second incident was located at Viking and Twinkling Boulevard. Neither incident resulted in significant injuries. The roads were very icy on this morning. And unfortunately, I think we may see replanned that tomorrow morning, then these be office on all of the roads. The fire department is currently working on a grant application for a new turnout beard dryer. The grant is administered through the Department of Public Safety and it's successful. The city would require a ten percent match for cities, or signs that you can't have five hundred dollars. So that would be our match if we're successful and see a grant. This, if we were successful, that fund would be covered under our existing breaking level.
The fire department. When is the deadline to apply and when do they?
April. Team, I believe, is the deadline for the application. They typically announce two to three months afterwards, depending on the amount of applications that they receive. So they receive a lot of it, I want you.
I'm sorry, it's a popular.
It's a very popular. Very well. The fire department had to replace a decal with a beauty officer squad during the decals coming out spontaneously. Unfortunately, this was not covered under warranty. Already they did waive the trip charge to come and replace it in the evening. The fire departments in the process of reporting our twenty-two thousand twenty-two incidents to the state farm marshal's office. Every year, we participate in national fire incident reporting system. Our responsibility as a fire department is to report those to the state, state then reports them nationally. It's part of now with our reporting duty with state and.
And chief, is that the understanding for the vote, was that including fire and EMS?
Correct. It's the eight year toll for you. So we did respond to two hundred and seventy incidents on you. Which one? The fire department did receive a fire code concern in one of the schools in town for an exit light that was not operational. This concern has been addressed at this point. We continue to monitor that situation. It's not uncommon to get some of these complaints all the time. As people and visitors move by facility, they'll notice something that doesn't seem right or fit right. The person that noticed this had a background in code. They poured it on the state farm marshal's office. It's typically the primary contact for schools in any given municipality. The state farm marshal forwarded it back to us during the process of being. The fire chief, myself, assistant chief frog, and mayor Philon attended the U N O P fire protection council meeting on January twenty-sixth. It was voted and approved for the county to move forward with the new records management system. That's going back to our end to its recording system. And it all allows us to track a full host of other things within departments such as training, home enforcement, public education, and things of that nature. The system that we currently use has no longer been supported for twenty-three years now. So we do have to move forward with alternative. This will come with an increased share, share costs, all fire permits. However, that won't impact us until twenty twenty-four. The increased cost for the city of Nowland has not yet been calculated. Just some rough, rough estimates based on how they do the four year. We're expecting roughly around a fifty dollar a year increase as our share. This is what that is. As the final bid is approved, we'll be able to run through the formula again on your expectation. With that, Mayor Council, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Point on the. Our protection council in the next meeting in April will be voting on the twenty twenty-four, like, right? So as soon as we get that, I will let the administrator send it out, do the consensus, we get them, put these on it, we can discuss it before they.
Then we should have a pretty good idea.
Council, any questions for chief? For here, number Ringo?
No, thank you. Just thank you for all the work you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And it. Third one. Day name third.
And the folks. That's right. This is the report for January twenty twenty-three for the U N O P sheriff's office serving the city of Nowland. We responded to one hundred and eighteen calls for service. That puts us right on pace for last year, one hundred and seventeen for the month of January. Three calls out to the bar down school, three alarm calls, eleven medicals, and nine people complain calls. Few calls of note out to the bar down facility on the eighth at ten A M, just after ten A M. We had a damage property report and a resident that left the area uncooked. He was located safely by law enforcement and returned to the facility. They did not want to press charges on that one. The resident left in the care staff at one one. And on the twenty-first, we received a call at seven fifty P M. We're reporting a vehicle stolen from the location, stolen vehicle along with staff member, and the keys were accessed by a resident. Who was accompanied by another resident who stole the vehicle from parking lot. That vehicle was located by law enforcement in the area. The vehicle fled. Law enforcement and due to the danger of the pursuit, we terminated that case pretty quickly. The vehicle was ultimately recovered in St. Paul, unoccupied. Both of the residents who involved and that were identified. There's a criminal investigation side to it, and I've been talking with bar down and their administrative investigation they're working on. Try to identify how this may have unfolded. Well, it's in their policies, presumably these are generally more secure than that. So I'm working with them and I'll probably be able to provide more detail about it at some point regarding how that unfolded and what their plan is. Obviously, a dangerous incident that definitely caught my attention. That's not one we'll call to have at that facility and was, of course, concerning. We lost because of the danger of vehicle pursuits and we are. In unprecedented territory when it comes to vehicle chases in the state of Minnesota. So try to do our best to resolve those and make sure we're not. Although our behavior is helping to make sure we're not having those, recurring those. And so I'll provide an update to city staff on that information.
Got a question on that?
Yes, sir.
He says, not normal, this facility, what, what do you think?
Well, I don't ever recall seeing a vehicle theft out of that location. Obviously, I'm relatively new to the city here and. Don't recall something like that happening out there. We've had a number of calls out there, some, you know, serious in nature. This one caught my attention because it turned into a vehicle pursuit, which. As everyone else can be extraordinarily angry, so.
For the record, we, the vehicles that have been stolen typically aren't from the property. They leave the property and you steal something from nearby locations. We have, we have seen, the other, are you liberty to say, I mean, these. People who left in the stolen vehicle, were they driving age or?
I don't have that information. I don't have their identities to share right now. I know they were juvenile. But no, if they were a driving agent, what kind of driving, training they did, huh? So while for all of them, I don't have a little.
For the record, I know that they were twelve, seventeen year olds. It might be a eleven to seventeen year old there. It's not an unusual situation. Even maybe a training others younger.
It's certainly possible they were not of driving age.
Which would make the chase even more serious.
Yes, and you know, we have to weigh that a lot, you know, we. We want to make sure we're stopping vehicles. We want to enforce. Our traffic stops, but we also can't chase vehicles to the point where it's becoming. More of a danger to chase that vehicle than the crime that happened. You know, this is, this underlying crime is a felony. Definitely motor vehicle, but ultimately, we don't want that to resolve in some sort of, sort of serious crash or something else what we've seen happen. Unfortunately, they seem to happen in the local county and across the country as well. So. Based on the information that I already reports, the information we had at the time, I think it didn't recall returning that chase pretty quick.
Okay, glad.
Is bar none, does it have police presence at the school or something like that? Police presence rather than the school is bar none, none the same, right? I don't.
We don't have a dedicated police presence on weekends in the way that you can see a school resource officer dedicated to the larger pool, but we do. We do our best to be there. We've had an initiative to try to be there outside of calls for service, which of course is great, but it also depends on what our availability is, what calls are gone. You know, we don't want to only be there for calls for service or incidents, but there's not always someone there, but there's certainly always a part of us.
I think be more of an age base in for some reason, or is it just that? Kind of that's the way it goes. I mean, I don't, so it's something that you're seeing more.
It's part of calls for service. You know, the mayor can probably speak to the long-term history of the bar in the facility. And I know that a lot of folks that. We are in a better place now than we have been in the past, certainly regarding the calls for service. But we also don't want to go in wrong direction. We don't, we're keeping a close eye on calls, especially calls that catch my attention, like the, like the theft of the vehicle chase, you know. I read that that morning, sent it out to the city staff that morning, and now I contacted the school leadership right away because I want them to know, like, hey, we're paying attention to these types of incidents and. They just need to know that it's on them to do their part. You know, we'll certainly do our part to assist. We'll do our part to support their mission, but they also have to be there part internally, policies, procedures, and training to make sure that they're helping us to make this.
Well, there's a reason it has its own category. This second page of your report was created just for us, all the city. So far none, that's a part of it because the nature of the calls and volume of the calls, we actually have everyone's can. It's, it's been up and down. We, we had a meeting earlier this year, last year, late last year. Administrator Lainer came on board and I admit. And, and really excited over what the past year had done, how much improvement, and they had a lot of consistency with their staff. When they were going, they called service, they were training people how to handle things and when to call it there. And really good in the last couple of months. It deteriorated. There's work that needs to be done. And you had a third one there.
I just had those two for bar down. I do have a few other calls for service to talk about citywide. The fourteenth at nine fifty seven A M, we received a fraud report from the sixty-two hundred block of Light and the Boulevard. This is a common scam. We get reports like this all the time. This was a phone call from someone claiming to be from Nexus Energy. This person said, hey, you have a pass through bill you need to pay it. And. The suspect directed the victim to pay with, in this, in this instance was a gift card. That's a very common scam and we see it all the time. We see reports like this on a regular basis. I really highlighted because in this case, the loss of about eight hundred and eighty dollars. But just to share with the citizens, some of the things we're looking for. If a company is calling you and having you try to pay a bill with a gift card, that's a scam one hundred. And the folks at Walmart and Walgreens and Target, they're trained to look for that and they ask people questions. What is this for? And unfortunately, the scammers will train the victims to not answer those questions. It's true to believe, try to get, you know, get the money. Eight hundred and eighty dollars, that's a lot of money to me, but we have seen these scams going with its millions, twenties, hundreds of thousands of dollars. Fortunately, so in this case, that money is almost never recoverable. Once it's been transferred to a gift card and then the number has been read to the suspect, the money will be gone most immediately and unfortunately, we can't recover the amount. One thing too is to remember, you can't always rely on caller ID. Caller ID, just like email addresses now, they can be what's called spoofed. So. You know, these, these folks have the technology that can get on their phone and they can enter, I want my number to say this, I want my name to say this, and they can make outgoing calls. So if you have any inkling of something not sounding right, something not adding up, hang up the call. Call back on a number you know is correct. So go to your bill from Comcast or Nexus or whoever. Go to the website that you knows the right website, go to an email that you trust that you knows from them, use that information and call them back. We've had folks, not necessarily here and now then, but we've had victims who have received calls from people saying. I am with the sheriff's office. You have a warrant. I need you to pay that warrant with an iTunes gift card, card or card, anything like that. Now, those calls are easy because. We get hung up on sometimes, so you're not going to offend us and hanging up on us. But if someone is suspicious about whether or not they're talking to a real deputy, you could always disconnect the call, call this back. Call nine one one and say, this person called me, something sounds off. Are they a real deputy? And they'll be able to help you verify them. So unfortunately, that's, it's a common scam and it works more than, more than you can think.
The fact that it's in the regional reports from the sheriff's office and how affected it is. I would provide one reasonable, I mean, eleven thousand.
Yeah.
Oh, that's a lot of money.
It is. A few other calls on the twenty-second at one fifty-four, we had a property damage at a storage facility on Iguana Street, one nine nine zero zero block. This is a bit of a weird one. We think a couple R Vs at the facility had some damage. The owners of the vehicles reported it to us, but they're working directly with the company. Sounds like maybe a snow contractor moved some vehicles. They weren't really sure, so. They're going to handle it on their own. They're going to call us back if they need anything they must, but kind of a weird call up there. Maybe the vehicle was damaged going into driving, so. And then on the twenty-sixth, at seven fifty-five P M, we responded from Salt, at a business in the one nine seven hundred block of Iguana Street. That's an active investigation. I can sure that we have identified a suspect in that case. Thankfully, injuries were minor. I don't know if it was fire or not. Injuries were minor. Could have been more serious. Thankfully, they weren't. So we have identified a likely suspect and we're investigating that one right now. So. Can't share too much on that yet, but we'll. Can't share too much on that yet, but we'll. We'll keep working on that.
What that was nineteen fifty five.
Yes, sir. And just to final note, we're going to try to do next council meeting in March. I think it's the fourteenth, if that sounds right.
That's correct.
We're going to have a meet the deputy. We have, of course, one new deputy that joined the city of Nowland. There's some new folks on the city council, so we'll get everyone in and we'll learn to know each other a little bit. I'm going to get tired of my reports anyway, maybe the deputies will be a little bit more engaging, we'll see. And the sheriff is going to join us as well that night. So you can meet him, of course, the sheriff is new. He's not new in law enforcement, but new to the sheriff's office and. He is graciously going to join us as well and so looking forward to that. That concludes my report. Any other questions I can start answering?
Mr. Sheriff, can I copy you, Lance?
I'll I'll make sure I ask them.
Council on Questions for Lieutenant. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thanks the team for their effort to our behalf. It's nice having a regular rotation here that we get to see. The deputies stopping in the office so we can. Express that to ourselves, but to the county wise and anybody else who comes in there. If I see a couple of cars, I generally might stop in and say something like. Thank the team, you know, in light of what's going on in the world today. Speak for Nowland. We appreciate law enforcement. We appreciate our our partnership with the sheriff. And nothing but good things to say, so.
Thank you. We know it and we feel it out here and we're happy to be here.
Planning zoning, nothing this month. We have administrator updates.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few things to go through here, but. The first item was what we pulled off the consent agenda. If we. You do have on the on the RCA, it's the four D, but it's basically introducing you to recycling center attendant. They will have us at the podium here in a second, but I just wanted to. Make sure we covered some of the items here and the new council members, if there's any question, but early on. We interviewed three candidates and some you remember, we had Christie in here and Kito was here. While while Kito was going through the process and getting background checked and all that kind of stuff, he was unaware of a medical condition and. He is dealing with some health matters now, so he withdrew his brain and moved it forward. We are still staying in contact with him. There may be some options down the road as far as September help or something along the way there. I know some of you shared with me that. You really enjoyed his demeanor and so on and so forth, but lucky for us, we interviewed three candidates. And Amy is with us tonight. She's already been through background. She's already been through the interviews and everything with us. And we're just going to take a moment here to be able to have her speak to us if you have any questions for her, but. Amy's right now Christie's in place, working part time. And we're looking to bring Amy on as soon as we can to make her to have her in place to be able to help also the two. Between Amy and Christie, they will be splitting thirty two hours a week. And once the training is done, Christie's been going through some training, but once Amy gets up to speed and training. Upon approval to come here tonight, then we will be adjusting the recycling. Hours at the recycling center to what you have on here. I think there were some questions maybe a week or two ago. About potential. Are we used, are we at the modified hours right now or not? We just can't do that at this point until we have two people that are on board because. We are looking at Tuesdays and Thursdays till seven PM, so two eight hour days during the week and then four hours on Saturday. And that's just more than Christie can do. And until Amy gets up to speed, then we're going to have the hours divided. With that, Amy, if you would. Be so kind to step up to the podium and just kind of introduce yourself.
I'm a former resident of Nowland, you too for about four years and. Through the minor work in the second year for the film training. We're like looking at what you've been following really nice, someone in here to follow what to do. It's not really exciting having an opportunity to, I'm very excited with what Adrian's been talking about, the future of recycling center and. But it's a. Could expand and really like talking to people and sharing with people. But I know about recycling and just been asking for it, so.
Questions? Amy, or for the administrator on this? Well, you didn't get a job there, don't you? So let's. With that, before we move on, let's take a motion, one way or the other. Actually approved, to hire Amy, we have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, the motion to approve the hiring of Amy into the recycling center, the second part of the meeting.
More than concern all the second, we found for the Brian, any other discussion, questions? Thank you, Harry. Not all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Folks. Motion here, welcome aboard. We agree on that. Those will be start training tomorrow. All right, administrator, continue.
Okay, so there are a few things in your packet there that I'm going to be speaking to and there's a couple additions here. So please bear with me and I will explain as I go along why the additions. Are there, but the first thing is the is the policy update. You should have that in your packet, that policy update. I just wanted to kind of talk about that a little bit. And really what that looked like is so. When when Frank, the interim administrator, asked things on to me as I was coming on. There were some things in the policy that Frank already spent some time going through. Some of it was just cleaning up verbiage, some of it was just looking at policy and so on and so forth with all his years of experience, so. He had some thoughts and and pass those on to me. We were looking to make sure that the policies are accurate. And then recently, council member Brian and Mayor Pilon and I sat down just to kind of go through that policy to kind of give it an overview. And and go through some of the things that we wanted to to address. There's going to be. One or two things, we can have a a future workshop if all of you would like to be participating in the policy updates. And if some of you, and I think some of you have already been going through some of the policy updates. So what my request to you would be, if you have been doing that, is please get with me because I'd like to capture your thoughts on there. We weren't necessarily trying to work in a vacuum, but I can only have two council members together at a time to be able to go through some of these things, so. Dan started right out of the gate on it and I asked the mayor to participate because of the. The the history that he understands of the policies and all that, so we sat down a week ago or so and went through that, so. If you are one of those council members that have been putting some time into that and would like to share with me some of your thoughts, I'd be happy to hear. That, please just reach out to me and we will all get that put together. But there's probably going to be a future workshop too where everybody's input can be. Be captured.
And so so along those lines, people do see things as they're going through that. They can get with you, they can email you. All we do is collect that and once we have all the. Corrections, adjustments, recommendations, that would be appropriate. Save time. Groups that we can try and. As much as we can understand as possible.
So I'm wondering, so with the power, when you're going through the policies, is that just. Are you going through them from start to finish? Is it that they're done through a few at a time? I mean, there's quite a few. There's a lot to go through.
So speaking. Were you finished?
Yes.
Okay.
Let's try to.
Thank you. Do what I was thinking there, did you?
Okay, I did.
That's a great question. In this case, when the three of us sat down, we went through the policy from beginning to end. We tackled the whole thing. Dan came for.
The administrative.
I'm sorry, administrative, yeah, not all. The one, the administrative policy that we went through.
First and second.
But Dan came prepared with some of his thoughts. I had what Frank had in there. I also had some of my thoughts that were put in there. The mayor came with something his, so we went through the section one to two through from the beginning. But there is more.
There are more policies. A lot more policies, obviously separate from order.
Right. That's kind of what it was.
The policies are our guidelines for cities, order to the law. In order to the big book. Other comments that you have on that or? Anything else for the council, for the municipal? All right.
Okay, the next one we'll move on to then is in your packet, the health, safety and efficiency improvement, that it would be your nine V one. If you'd like to take a look at that one there, that that is asking, they asked there. I kind of listed out some of the things on there that we were concerned with and why why they ask is here. I also again sat down with interim administrator Boils. Upon accepting this position, there were several immediate health and safety concerns that I've been addressed recently. I did talk with Lori Jaeger and and. What we discussed is to be able to pull some of these things or to be able to get these things completed, some of them being the air quality here in this building and some maintenance that needed to be done. Some things at city offices that needed to get done. The ask here tonight is to move sixty thousand dollars from the twenty twenty two budget. To move it into the twenty twenty three capital improvement fund to be able to continue to. Go down the list of items that need to be addressed. In such way.
Obviously, as it says here, that the twenty twenty two general fund budget, that can be our fund balance, that basically. Some of the carryover money was spent last year. That will be reallocated into the twenty twenty three budget, this is considerably. Identify that to the building fund. What you're saying?
This will be moved to the capital improvement fund. Questions of me on that, anybody need more specifics on it? Some of you that have been in city offices have seen something that already happening. Just because of timing and your contractors now, but. Be happy to answer any questions, we'll addition to one of your example.
Else, any questions, Mr.? As I'm ready.
I don't have any questions, but I could, we'll just say that at the time, in the last few times I've been into the city administrative offices. The changes that have been made, recommended and made by staff have really helped to improve. The the overall usage of the of the facility. In making it more user friendly, both for staff and for council, staff and residents. So I applaud staff for taking that initiative. To try to make it a more user friendly facility.
Thank you. What else? I didn't have accept a motion to. amend the twenty twenty three budget, move sixty thousand from the twenty twenty two general fund budget into the capital improvement. Completely needed renovation to the city buildings. I'll come, Brian, don't move. The motion, councilman Brian. Second, can you come number all those, any other discussion? See here now, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion here.
So before we get. So before we get to C, I want to squeeze one in here that'll. Speak to the C, so just for your information, council, me. Myself and and a couple of the leaders here. Made the determination that we wanted to create a leadership team, if you will. That leadership team meets every other week, twice a month, if you will. That that team consists of myself and Natalie Johnson. Joe Glaze from our public works department. Lieutenant Jacobson, Chief Schmidt. Adam has a standing invite also to be able to be part of that. And. We, I also asked Mayor Pilon to sit down on that because of the history that adds with the city and what this leadership. This leadership, the purpose of the team is is to get together and just talk about things that are that affect each one of the departments. It's also good for me to be able to hear from all the department heads without having to have. Individual meetings every time. You know, there were times that we sat in here this past week when we had our meeting that. Some of the stuff that Chief Schmidt was talking about, obviously affects Lieutenant Jacobson and his deputies, which also affects the city. And Natalie's in there from a financial piece to make sure if there's anything that ties into the finances. She also takes the minutes for the meeting and and Natalie has a lot of knowledge of what's going on in the city. Also, and then you have Joe Glaze, so you know, his following and keeping the roads clear. Or if there's maintenance or there's damage to a roadway and we need to be done, we need to communicate with you two gentlemen here. It just. Was a good opportunity for what I, and I just came up with a name and we could change it if we wanted to, but. We just call the leadership team and we get together and talk about things that are important to the city and how one department affects the other department. And of course, we have the mayor in there and then he would be so kind to sit in because. Just some of the knowledge and and kind of hearing what's going on and so on and so forth with the city. So we kind of put that in place and I. I just wanted you all to be aware of that. It was kind of one of those things where we kind of put our heads together and said, what makes sense? And I'll tell you, we went two hours at the first meeting, went over a little two hours. And we talked to a wide variety of different topics and I really look forward to continue on with that dialogue with all the depart. With all the department heads. One of the things that we were talking about in that meeting and now I'll move into C on your packet. And where it says welcome packet for new residents. So there was some discussion that we had, we're still in the infant stages here, but we were just. Conceptually, we're just thinking about, you know, what did things look like? And one of the things that we talked about is this welcome packet that you have in there. And you know. We have the ability to look at a hundred and eighty days, houses that have been sold back a hundred and eighty days or the city of Nowland. So we can get information on new people that have moved into houses or or moved into our community, or maybe they've built. And we can get some information and what we're starting to brainstorm is what would it look like if we were to put together a welcome packet? You know, some of the things we talked about was giving them, you know, maybe a fridge magnet or a brochure of some sort that says. If you need the sheriff's department, call this number or if you want to talk to somebody in your local fire department, this would be a number. How do you get ahold of the city administrator? How do you get us all the city staff? Who are your council members if you need to talk to? Just things that if you think back to the, when you moved into your home or something like that, what would have been some of the nice things they have? When you're a new resident and and that's kind of what we're calling the welcome packet, so we're we're working to do that. We're not. Ready to put anything out at this point, but we've just been kind of discussing, what does that look like and what can we do just kind of welcome people into our city? And and what are some of the important things that they would like to have as they're learning the area and so on and so.
I'm glad.
When you're looking at that, you're finding, I guess, we need to work in the cost that. City. To give an idea of what that was, who's sending it out to, what's in them.
Most certainly. We also talked about even businesses and, you know, when somebody want to put a. Crew on in there to come and see our business or come and try, you know, different things that are going on. The meaning. Cost is definitely going to be part of it for sure, but we're just trying to figure out if we're going to do it, let's do it. All encompassing, so benefits everything.
Any other questions on that concept?
I think it's great, yeah, I do. I think it's great, so I'm impressed that it's just. I'm looking up all the signs, but I think it's a good idea. I've been in other cities that have done that. Sometimes it's a email, but it's just been a little few cities and. So I think it's a good idea to look at.
The first part of that, I mean, is the leadership. Also, leadership team, that's put together. Any concerns from council with the pinning by the need of. Any on, sir?
Mr. Mayor.
House member, Anna.
I would just ask if we could consider. That part of this welcome packet is an introduction to our website. And where they can find what on our website.
I appreciate that. And along those lines, since you brought the website. I know that Madeline has been doing some updates on it with those of you that are using the website. If you see things that are working really well. Feel free to contact Madeline and let her know that. If you see things that you'd like to see improved, please contact Scott, let him know that. So Madeline has had five different people ask you to change. If you see something that needs to be updated or clarified or put on the website, please communicate that to Scott. If you see something that is not going well. From Madeline's. If you're doing that invitation. All right, continues her.
All right. Thank you, Mister Mayor. So a couple of the items here that you won't have on your back because they are hot off the press, but I. I wanted you to be aware of. The next item I'd like to talk about is the. Now then threshing show advertising. So I just received. An info or a request here from the from Kirk Johnson from the now and threshing show. About advertising and. What they're looking at here is one business card, card size ad to appear in an now and threshing show brochure. And then another business card size ad to appear in the now then threshing show website. The cost to the city is a hundred and eighty dollars to do that. We have been part of this in the past. This was just sent to me yesterday, so that's why when I'm planning on, we have participated in the past, but I didn't want to assume anything. I wanted to. Bring it before council here and just ask, is this something that we want to continue to participate in? And one of the things I just want you to be aware of, if you do decide you want to continue on, is I would contact them and ask them. You know, we go ahead and place the app, but then I would like to ask them if they would like to place an add in our. Newsletter, maybe put a coupon in there or some sort of a dollar, a couple of dollars off or something. Just good partnership back and forth. Sure, we can do this, but we'd like for you to be able to participate and be part of our newsletter too. So. If if council decides that this is something you want to continue on, just know that I would reach out to them and have that conversation. So really the ask is, would we like to continue to advertise with the mountain freshen chill for the two hundred and eighty dollars? That's what we have in the past, but.
Accept the motion.
I'm trying to make a motion to. To put the ad in. For the for a hundred and eighty dollars.
Motion from Councilman Brian. I'm sorry. Second, we're not never all discussed, Mr. Mayor. Come on, Brian.
I'm trying to think what you, it's how, I don't recall exactly what the ad was. How laid it out. If it was literally here to the city of Melbourne and. I'm just, yeah, I'm wondering if there's anything else that we can put on there to take advantage of it. More than if there's anything else that we want to emphasize or whatnot or.
The brochure, did they hand out? It actually gets the sugar dollar.
Right. I'm just trying to think of if 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 anyone either. Anyone has any suggestions or feedback or what else we could put in, including that size, maybe it's not a lot of room. But if there's any, I mean, it's certainly a likely opportunity to show off something or other recycling and ours or something like.
It'd be like business car.
And now that we have to make a decision.
What is the deadline?
No, I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking of if there's anything else who want to change or make. To. Then take advantage of it if there's anything else that you want to do other than here, here's the website.
Why do we do this? Because the deadline is before we meet again? If council members or staff have an idea of what we could do to accentuate that, if there's more information. You probably have to buy a bigger ad. Or just, but if we utilize this one here, if there's a way we can do. Something additional, you know, get that information in the staff and. We'll leave it to staff to say, here's, here's a good idea. We can incorporate this. Maybe eliminate some of the rest of this. Again, if they have a phone number. And an email account, maybe they can reduce some of the other addresses and stuff.
So if any, you know, if anything else that came up or if anyone else.
All right. So right now we're. Motion second to approve. The ad with the. Encouragement to if there's something we can do to accentuate. Information from the city. Prove this in any way. And we'll leave that to staff to do before the. All right, any other comments?
No, I I believe that we should continue with our advertising and if. If Mister Leonard is able to get them to. Participate with an ad in our newsletter, that would be great.
All those paid motions, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Post. Motion carries.
I only have two more left, but the next few are. Little lengthier than than the one we just went through, so. So some of you may be familiar with, I've been getting brought up to speed very quickly here, but we are. Getting ready to go through an audit. Minnesota Pollution Control Agency or MPCA staff will be working with us. Conducting an audit of our storm water pollution prevention system or SWIP. And yes, I did it right, right? Okay. The audit will review tools from the organization that we are doing internally to be able to meet these requirements. And when I speak of the MS four. That's the permit that we do. So a couple of things I want to bring your attention. So when I say the audit from the MS four. It's thirty four pages and hundreds of questions. That they're asking us, what are we doing internally? The team that's been tasked to 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 sit down and go through some of this is Shane Nelson. Our engineer, Liz Stockman, our planner. Joe Glaze is part of this team. I'm also part of that team. And again, I. Well, I'll get to that point in just one second here and we need to do, we need to gather information. We're meeting again this, we met a week ago. If you don't, who is going to be doing which questions and who has the supporting documentation for these areas? And Shane's going to be the point person kind of compiling this, but we are getting together again this Thursday to bring our information forward and start putting it. Together in a format that's acceptable for the audit. We are then. Going to be getting together again on the twenty first to be able to finalize things and this audit will be a half a day audit. Done so far, what they're telling us it's going to be done. Not in person, but we'll be doing it over Zoom call or a TV call or something along those lines, and they're planning a half a day to be able to do that on the twenty seventh. So we are gathering information, putting together, putting the final touches on it. But what I want and there will be additional costs for Shane and Liz's time to be able to do that. This Thursday I'll be asking for an estimate on what they think this time, sorry, but just as a council to be aware. And I also asked the mayor to sit in on this. I've never been through an audit like this before. And the mayor was very familiar with it. It brought me up to speed before. I see a ton of value in the mayor being part of that. He's asked great questions and things that we weren't thinking of when it comes to that. And so my ask tonight with that is is to bring you up to speed on where we are. It's going to be moving. You'll hear more about it. But my ask tonight to council members is I'm asking for permission to continue to have the mayor sit on this until we get this thing wrapped up. He's brought a lot of value to that in our first meeting. There is one meeting he isn't going to be able to make that will be what he, I would like that my ask would be that he be part of this audit and make sure. That our first time or my first time through that things go smoothly and and we're not missing anything as we go through this. Those were the highlight items I wanted to talk about and bring up to you. And this is the packet. Just to give you an idea of how much goes along with it, so.
That's the package of questions.
Yeah, that's just the question.
The the questions, so it's not a thing I didn't give in the first meeting. I've I've been through a lot of audits, you're probably advantage them. Don't know how this is going to be from state agency like this. It's good that it's going to be virtual. Because it's always better to do that than having to start searching through the org and cabinets inside. But what has to happen, meaning it will take place on Thursday, is the group will. Collect their supporting documentation for the thirty four pages of questions. Some of those may be a document that cover multiple questions. But there has to be documented evidence and maps, going what we've been doing over the year. To support this program. Educational opportunities, documents we use. Evidence that we're actively promoting this. The concern is, as we said, that there will be some extra costs. I don't have any idea what. The portion that Liz and Shane will be taking, probably taking mostly the week to come. Back with the data presentation. That being said, they'll go through the questions on Thursday and then all that documentation has to be forwarded to the MPCA by Tuesday. Twenty first, and then the audits. They'll have a week to go through the documents we provide and then they'll come back with those specific questions to give them more evidence. Or more questions during that. Because it's something that. According to to Liz and Shane, they have met with previous foot pressures on this, but we didn't have those records. Scott's been working with Joe to get everything that Joe has available. Natalie's been working with him as well. So they're doing portion of this that the administrator and public works director have to do. But storm water prevention plan, we have to map every storm mark on in the city. We have to track them. We have to measure how much debris is building up and then. We at points we might have to test those and then check them out if they're contaminated. We have to know everything that's flowing into our waterway. And because our. Water systems drain into Siriburg up in St. Francis and then it's got to be handy. And those are affected waters. We have to track everything that might be in our watershed that goes into those. So it's fairly complex. It's something the city council used to do. We probably assigned it off to game to be managing this. It used to be something where each councilman looking portion of this. Plan, and while this bump of the work with city staff, maybe it happened, so. Part of the reason I've had some value in that is because I've done this before and made with the plan. Know what we've done in the city. And that along with my lot of experience, that's the commission. So that's part of what. As Scott was explaining, there will be extra costs that we didn't anticipate. This is something that we just found out, let you and Shane heard. He brought our attention and. And we actually asked him to provide a copy of the audit and it was much more extensive than we thought. So I'd be willing to participate if that's something that counts. And clarify.
We've been through an audit, and this is.
We haven't. It's something MPCA. Uses that they're well reading. I'm guessing with all the affected cities. I don't know how many of these audits they're doing a year. Again, this is something that just came up this week. Shane's known about it. But it was last week we brought to our attention. How? When I asked him how extensive they are. I I I've been through investor audits. Manufacturing audits and systems audits. They can be very rigorous. And they can be. I got to get this done and so we asked some questions and that thing. Generally, it depends on the caliber of documents, what documents you provide. If you feel a weak system, the audit can be a lot more than that. It looks like they're under control. And they're just asking. But having not done this and not aware of anybody who has, I'm sure. And we don't know what the. When we talked to Shane and his experience in this, that if you have a system that needs some improvement, they'll give you some time to improve that. He really wasn't aware of if you had major faults. And because I've never been audited in this area and because it hasn't come to the attention of council in years. We really don't know the quality of our records.
Mister Mayor.
Else member Aida.
I I'm more than comfortable having you sit in on those sessions in regards to the audit. If memory serves me, the last time the MS four permit was in front of us. I know myself, I had many questions as to who is going to be responsible for what. And I wish I could. Off the top of my head, remember when that was in front of us. But we were assured by the city clerk at the time. That all items within the all required items had been or will be being assigned. To specific people for them to. Provide the information for for what's required of them. I don't know if there's any information out there in our existing files that can provide us that. And I, you know, I I I will go back through my my emails and my. Files to see if I can find anything. But I, you know, there should be something documented because we were assured that. This was being taken care of, it was being handled, was being assigned to the appropriate personnel, whether they be internal or external. So some, hopefully that information is captured somewhere within our. Existing city records, so we're not reinventing them, the wheel.
It's not as robust as we would have hoped. We did find some records that. Shane had met with previous staff regarding. Updates to the requirements. And highlighting new requirements. But as far as assignments of duty, we have not been able to find it. That being said, the curtsy review of the documentation required. I think what I've seen from Joe's records. And from what Liz and Shane do on a regular basis when there's new developments. I'm hoping it will be pretty well. I was pleased with what Joe was able to pull together. Now, they need records where he's actually gone out and monitored the conditions of the ponds. We left where we don't have records.
Mister Mayor.
Councilman Brian.
At this point in time, everything seems to be in place and we have a plan to tackle it. I would hate to. Throw anything into the mix that's going outside the cards. I'm totally okay with with you working with that. To make sure that our audit is successful.
I'm good.
And then.
Mister Mayor.
Councilman Rada.
I I would hope then going forward. That this be a lesson to us that we need to make sure that when we know. We have a list of however, there were many things that were required on that MS four permit. That that we are tracking those and that staff understands the importance to going forward. To to track who's responsible for what and to get updates that we are, so that if we are. Required to have another audit or no audit, we we know where we're at and we have our, all of our bases covered. And the the city was is protected.
And that's one of the things that we we talked about is records that are going to be. Provided to send into the MPCA. We would have. We would have a copy of all those, electronically at least, and the hard copies where they exist. So that our staff could have a record of those, so in future, we're able to answer the questions as well. But that's one of the things Scott has indicated he's already moving forward on. There are six major sections in, in the program. And so we will make sure that there's a clear definition of who's responsible for what, and what timeframe we'll get it on the calendar.
Thank you.
I think once you get the results, it's like a standard audit, it should be compliant, it should be ongoing. Requirements, even if it's going to require data entry or something. Control plan is here, but it might be worth adding a specific agenda in some meeting that goes to the office.
I will continue to work on that, and be there for the audit and.
Thank you very much. Mayor, I have one more item, if you. Here. Okay, so. I promise I'm not making this. The norm, this is an exception to that, but I needed to bring your attention for a multitude of. Well, we understand that there may be some problems with this, but just a level set to y'all, so we have. Two plow trucks, full size plow trucks, and we have two city trucks. That are what I call commercial grade trucks. Those of you that are familiar with it, the Sander that was recently approved, went on the five fifty, and we use that to keep things straight, so the five fifty. Is a commercial truck. That has a aluminum box, dump box on the back that we use for. Salters on. Which was just thought of again today for using the heck out of this thing, so. Oh, louder, I'm sorry, which is a plow truck, yes, so it does have the Western V plow on it also, so we use it for pulling the cup of sacks. Road, sumping, sanding, and, and just all kinds of road maintenance, and then we switch it over, and we use it in the. The other truck that we have is a truck that we've had since two thousand eight, in my understanding, going back and looking at history. Some of you that have been here long may understand this, but at some point, there were two trucks that were purchased in two thousand eight, one ton. For lack of a better term, regular heavy duty pickup truck. One thing I was going to say about the five fifty, it does have duals on it, duals on it, so it gives us more stability if we can do heavier payloads. This one ton that we have was a, a truck that the fire department purchased back, when they purchased two of them, and had used for one, so then this truck was. Given as a public works vehicle back then, wasn't something we specked out, wasn't something that we normally use, but we, we made work. It has had. Oh, thank you, yes. We have put a lot of time and effort and money into maintaining this truck. And we were trying to do the best we could with it until recently, I just found out that the box that is on that truck. Is come loose, has rusted through, it rattled against the back of the cab. And I thought, okay, well, we'll take that and get it welded, so we took it in and had a look at, and there's nothing to weld the two underneath there, it is in pretty tough shape. We've rebuilt the front end in the, that, that truck multiple times. I say all that to say, we've, we've nursed this truck along and made it work for as long as we could. I recently asked Joe and Eric and myself, we've been talking about this quite a bit. If we were to look at replacing that truck, what it would look like, what would we spec out? What would be the optimal truck for what we need to do again as a plow truck? And to be able to use it for pulling our trailers, using it for grass and mowing parks and all that type of stuff. And among the people that we put in there to go to the job site. What we came up with. From looking at maintenance records and so on and so forth, we thought that a Chevy. Three quarter tons, so thirty five hundred, or excuse me, one ton, excuse me, heavy duty. Crew cab, so four doors, so we could get people in it or equipment in it as we need to, with, again, aluminum box. Commercial grade box, just like they have on the five fifty. Would be what we were looking at, also with a towing, or excuse me, towing package, yes. But also with the, to be able to put a plow on the front, another V plow. Right now on the truck, we have, we just have one of our standard scrape blade plows down there, which is severely. Undersized and, and isn't as heavy duty for what we'd like to do for what we do in the city, so. Recommendation going forward.
And if I recall, you said you checked.
So that snowplow, just this winter season has been, our neighbors over here at AMV have helped us out, and have welded it twice already this year. If you look at the plow, you can see that. Just the mass of it, the way we use it, the way we're out there, it, it just isn't designed for this commercial use, it would be. Let's just leave it at that, there's plenty of work that goes into the plow to make and operate us. So we scrambled, and Joe Glaze, to his benefit. Emailed me and called me on Saturday, because we've been looking to see what, what can we do here. Found a truck that fits the spec that I was telling you about. It's in Stillwater Motors. It has a. Monroe box on it. Aluminum box. And the reason this, this, that is the dump box, it's aluminum dump box that I was speaking of, so again. Look at the five fifty we have with aluminum dump box, we're talking about the same thing, it's a different manufacturer, but same, same. The one ton that we have currently is gas. We're looking to go to diesel, that means our whole fleet will be diesel across. Will be able to fuel here at the yard instead of having to run to get gas and then from those when we need to and so on and so forth. So all our fleet from skid loader to front end loader to plow trucks to smaller trucks, everything is diesel. Weird to go with that. So the six point six. Liter diesel, Duramax, heavy duty, duly like our five fifty. With the box on it. They have one of them, the only reason the Stillwater has one is because this Monroe. Has access to be able to get some of these chassis, and then they put their product on there, and then they put them out to dealerships to promote their product, so they have one truck. As of yesterday, we put a refundable five hundred dollar deposit down on it, that will hold it till tomorrow for us. Like any good salespeople or salesperson, he's telling me he's got a line of people waiting for it, but. Take it for what it's worth, it probably does, to be honest with you, since there isn't very many of these. To purchase that vehicle, so the twenty twenty three Silverado thirty five hundred with a Monroe. Easy dump box. Hydraulics box on it. The total package. For. The truck, the box, the tax. The new plow on the front. The lighting package, it's a six point lighting package, so the safety lights, the strobe light that we put on it. And in this case, with the, we'd have running boards on it, the total package from what I was able to put together with the salesperson, Jim. Is one hundred and four thousand five hundred and thirteen dollars. I also checked with our attorney, Bob Rupi, to make sure that we were going to do things. As we need to be, I do have a second estimate. I have a second estimate for, it doesn't have the dump box on it, but for a truck, and then to be able to do the add-ons and everything, so if we were to put the. Box on it, everything we just talked about here, all the accessories, the lights, and all that. To be able to, to do that package, this is a twenty nineteen Silverado. With fourteen thousand miles on it. But what they're telling me would be a limited warranty, this is a full warranty on the twenty twenty three, the bumper, it's a brand new truck, it's got two hundred miles on it. When it came, it came from Wisconsin. This one with fourteen thousand miles, if we were to do everything like for like on this truck that I'm telling you here. This truck with fourteen thousand miles and four years older is one hundred and sixteen thousand two hundred and sixty three dollars. The kicker with that one is it's in Maryland, and they're telling us to start to be a thirteen week warranty. I would like to be able to move forward with something like this, because we still have part of our winter season left. I'm concerned about the safety of the, the one ton that we're using right now, that box rattling around down there, right now, we just have some sand in the back giving it weight. For traction, and that's how we're using that truck right now. So. The reason I bring this, not in an RCA necessarily right now, or a resolution, is because I needed to move on, this all started happening yesterday late morning. And I've been working on it all yesterday and mostly today, trying to get everything fine too. We also sat down and talked to Lori Yeager, does our finances. That dollar amount that we're talking about. What is, we have money in our budget to be able to make that work, we would make some adjustments in twenty twenty four, which she was going to be making already. But we would adjust a few numbers around for twenty twenty four. But the, the long and short of it is that money is in the twenty twenty three budget. To be able to purchase this, this vehicle. I can't think of anything else, I, I did as much as I could to put together the package. I think it'd be an outstanding vehicle for many, many years for us, we'd have multi purposes. To be able to use it for, we won't have to continue to limp along with the, what we're doing with the two thousand eight right now. Right now, this vehicle comes white. If you know anything about our vehicles, we have a blue plow truck, we have a red plow truck, we, we have another red, the five fifty's red. I reached out to Scott Wright. From Extreme Graphics here locally, and he would be able to put. I'll use his terms, I'd really be able to make that truck look nice for you guys. With the white background and putting a wrap on it to be able to make it look more like a red truck. We have to put some over that already, see it now, let it all on there, so that is something that we could take a look at, but we certainly don't have to do it right now.
Um, with this, oh, basically in, like. Some of our roads have. Needed more ice this year, or is needing more sanding this year, is that something that? Is you using for that?
So I'm so glad you asked that, one thing I did in advance. For all of you tonight. Was if we were to use this truck, like we do the five fifty where we have a sulfur in it now, that would. That would constitute an additional purchase of another sulfur for this truck. Sulfur sander, if you will. I did price it out. We'd go the two yards instead of the three yard we did, I think we could do the two yard in that, and that is about nine thousand one hundred and a few dollars change on there. With our discounts and everything, if we wanted to put a sulfur in the truck, and then have two trucks that have the sulfur signature in it. I didn't put it in there for tonight, other than it is an option, it's something I'd like to look at, but that one hundred and four thousand five hundred and thirteen dollars in tonny is not a cool solution, there'd be another ninety dollars in addition. Then you'd have three trucks with all the same capabilities as plowing, and you can snow, and that early, it's better, you know, that. Right now, I'm proposing without the sulfur. So we still just have the one five fifty plus our large.
Yeah. Quick question on sulfur sanding, I don't think it's currently available.
It is. As of yesterday.
Your question, and. Big trucks would do a stand saw. And the, the idea of the smaller one, we can do a salt mix. Also. And so parking lots areas where we're not just looking at attracting someone, is not. They can put, they can have a smaller load in that, and you can have pure salt. And that's one of the advantages for arcing areas with somebody. We don't want to waste sand on gravel roads necessarily. Sometimes it's pure sand on gravel roads. No salt. So it gives them some flexibility. And then they don't have to bring the big trucks out to a spot.
So for example, today. The, we got a few calls, there were certain gravel roads that were slick, to say the least, today. We started out with large trucks and realized that even the large trucks weren't doing it real well. So we switched over to the five fifty, and we put nine yards of product out, they had ground roads out of the five fifty, so that's on. Eric was in that truck, so the result was greater, roughing up some of the ice, so we could get some of that to end, and we ended up doing three loads of that, that just to air under nine yards of product coming out of those roads. It is a. It is a sweet setup, what I just said. Let me get that five fifty. So as we're sitting here, seeing what my, what my ask is, is. Ask questions, am I okay? Would, would the council be okay with me moving forward this, but what my ask would be is since the RCA and the resolution isn't done, and we are kind of under the time. That's the only truck that I have of this caliber that I know out there, we've been looking for over a week and, and checking, they come with the, with some of the, all the stuff that we can put on it, what comes away you want it. My ask would be. If the mayor and maybe a council member. Join me in an ad hoc team. To dot all the i's and cross all the t's on this, and move forward.
It's a one ton?
It is a one ton, it's a pretty good one.
So if we had a. The hang of V plow in front of it, and put a two yard. You know, five fifty is a ton and a half, a ton and three fourth of it. Versus a one ton, if we have a one ton that got.
So that, that was reasonable, that's why we went on the two yard versus the three yard that we had, we did size it with the countryside with the right path, so it's got a ninety six V plow on it. I got two estimates, one was a polyplow, one was a steel plow. We're aiming towards a steel plow, so it's six hundred dollars, but I'd like to say a steel plow will be. And putting all those attachments on there, and as we looked at it, we're not. Not over, as a wavelength. I can verify, I can verify. The, the O eight is in tough condition, and when I looked at that, it's got seventy four thousand dollars on it. My worry is the box. Has nothing to be, no frame to go over, it's all rest, that's the main thing, and then the amount of money we put in. For due to the new front end, get some front end work done to it again. It's, it's been an ongoing, and the plows, we. As I said, we've already welded it twice, it's here, it's been smaller. Not the ideal setup for what we're using, we made it work as long as we could, but I really think we're at the end of it.
Last time we had funding and worked on, and asked about the bill. And. When they rebuilt the town, and Eric was asking for reasonable wall joints. One of the reasons that we're going through there. Unanswered. Four years or five fifteen.
Fifteen, two thousand fifteen, I think for a second, yeah. Yes, we said that one time.
Mr. Mayor. Can I ask you guys to talk a little bit about our American, here you go, um, make it summer, pardon please.
There, there isn't a capital plan, it was, it was out of ways and way beyond our life expectancy, they're heading it. Every year life expectancy, I think, compared with them. The plow trucks.
You're here.
That's our, we're in, we're straight later.
To your comment, councilmen were always about the big plow truck. This does not take any fun away from the big plow truck, and that one can be. One thing I will add to that, though, we were all in the, understanding, at least I was, that, that plow truck would be in. March of this year, and we were notified here a week, maybe ten days ago, that that is not the case, the best they can tell us is that. Sterling thought the large plow truck will be in twenty twenty four, so is that, is that being March of twenty twenty? Thought the large fall truck will be in twenty twenty four. So is that I ask, does that mean March of twenty twenty four since of March of twenty three? And that committed twenty four is the best they can do. But that money is. Uh being given that is set aside for that drop from twenty twenty. We will be going to another winter season with the red fall truck that Eric uses to.
Mister Mayor.
Councilmember.
Um two things. One is a request is, as as council members speak, sometimes it's garbled. So I would ask that. Prior to a council member speaking that they get acknowledged by the mayor so I can understand who's speaking. And that, as Natalie said, if you could speak a little louder, that would be great. Um I it. This is a lot of money to talk about it at one time. Um and not having anything in front of us, but it sounds like both Administrator Laner and Mister Glaze and um. Mister Madsen have put a lot of effort into this. They understand the um. Equipment better than anyone and what it can and cannot do for us. And if I'm I'm comfortable if they're asking for this, that 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 we approve it. Now I can't vote tonight because I'm not there. Um but if we do, if if council does vote to approve it. I would ask that part of that approval that at next month's meeting. That a RCA and a resolution come to us. Yes, it's after the fact, but it's at least documented um appropriately that. The council did approve this.
And and Councilman Ringo, and you notice, if you heard that Administrator Laner was asking. To make sure that he's across and has it out of there. Two of us work with him to put that together and obviously put it in the form of our state resolution for. Final approval. That's something that we work with him on to make sure. The council has input. Before the final contract is signed.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments?
Mister Mayor.
Councilman Brian.
Yeah, I know. Trying to find anything, especially pickups. One is not, it's not. It's not inexpensive and it is also difficult to find. Find something that's actually worth, you know, rough shirt last night. You can't find, it's very difficult to find anything that's even below that, let alone that's within. Uh hours drive to go. So that's just kind of the situation where we're in. Also knowing that. If if we're waiting on the, we're pretty much gonna be waiting on the Sterling for another year, then we at least have a backup that we can use. So at least have, you know, some something that's. Newer and reliable than where the box has been a fall off. So I think it's definitely worth doing. Um. So I will make a motion that um Administrator Laner and Mayor and the mayor work with staff to. Um find a replacement truck for our cost not to exceed the. A hundred and ten thousand.
In the number eight.
My only thought is. The this one is scarce, that's great. We can probably live by what we have. She can be looking at it at five fifty. It's something that. Is more commercial this. It's a one time pickup to get it up to the same. Put two yards in back. You can load it with gravel or asphalt every sudden. A one time, a one time pickup's got seven years wheels in it, a ton and a half. You guys got maybe by a commercial wheel somewhere. So. Five fifty is a platform truck, thirty five.
Mister. Councilmember, there's a I think. Want to agree with you more. I I subscribe to the same philosophy. Um. I can tell you this, so when we sat down and looked at our needs and when we started specing out a vehicle, we considered the five fifty. Uh one of the trucks we even looked at was a sixty five hundred. So it's even bigger than the five fifty that we had. I mean, oh, because now you're getting into. Lot larger plows and the whole thing. You know, you know what I'm talking about, right? So. So we also took the liberty of looking at new versus used. Uh like I said, this was when I we, so this aren't the only trucks that we looked at. Um but when we started specing this out, we were fairly co- very confident when Joe and I and Eric sat down. That a one ton with a different footprint, meaning having the duallys on it and the heavy duty capacity that it maybe. Uh comes with with the with the heavy duty package would be considerably. A considerable upgrade from the one time that we that we have now. From all the way, we looked at all the way from pulling our flatbed trailer with the lawn mowers on it to the parks to. Using it for snow plowing. We didn't just look at it just from a snow plowing perspective. We tried to look at it from a toll perspective. All calling employees around. That's why we're talking about a crew cab versus an extended cab. The five fifty we have right now is an extended cab. Uh this one will be a full four doors, be a crew cab that we can get people and equipment and all that kind of stuff. So I don't want. And I don't think that's what you're saying, but I don't want anybody to get the impression that, oh, we fell in love with this truck as we found it. It was the truck that we were. Specing out for future proposals before we knew all the other things that were going on with the box and on top of the other things. So um. I totally respect where you're coming from and I get it. But we were pretty confident that what we were able to do here in a one ton is gonna be a substantial upgrade. And we looked, like I said, at other five fifties, even sixty five hundreds and. You know, I'll do what you guys want to do. I totally get it. Um but we're comfortable. Yeah, no, I think it's a great question.
I would support Dan's motion. He has to be about a hundred and twenty, so that would be uh Texas, as we are saying here.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Um my hearing that you want to investigate the sander at this point?
After today, what happened today, I think it will be the.
Those people are all calling, because they can call Dan.
I know, I know.
So I'll make.
Oh, sorry. So I just said after what I heard today with what happened with um. Some residents called about the sander and I think that would be an excellent thing to add. So I agree.
Administrator Laner, so I will fine tune the pencil in the morning then, and I do have an estimate already on the two yard sander. It's the identical sander that we have. It's a smaller size, same controls. So as we go through the training and teach you how to use it, they already figured it out with five fifty. It will all be the same kind of setup uh. It's a smaller box as well. I will verify the numbers and make sure that that's what I got from them is. Good to go. Uh but what I received today from them was right in that ninety one hundred dollars. Uh countryside.
That available apparently? Is that company can be used this season yet?
What they've told us is that their sulfur's there and they, that same company puts in our light package for us.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? See, hearing none, although we favor. Um authorizing uh staff and there to uh figure out the final package here, not to exceed a hundred and twenty thousand. They signify, I'd say that. Post. Motion care. Anything else for us?
No, sir, just to thank you. Thank you. And this isn't normally how I like to bring things forward and I appreciate you indulging me in going through it this way. Um. I totally understand the RCA and resolution will be followed up with uh this has been more than my. Thank, I'm just gonna say thank you. And I'm sure staff are gonna, public works guys are gonna thank you. It's happened real quick in the last forty eight hours and and I appreciate. Um you guys considering this and approving this. This will be great. One last thing I'll say, Mister Mayor, okay? We are also then looking at what do we do with that old truck and plow and we are trying to see whatever we can, yeah, we're not keeping it, that's for sure. Um but we're trying to see, is it best to trade in or is it best to sell outright? Uh we've started those conversations this afternoon and whatever we are able to get for that truck and plow will then go back into our. Uh equipment fund. So some of that price should be up soon.
I I will suggest that this time of the year selling that truck, well, probably is not optimal because too late in the year.
Right.
Um on trade in value anyway. We can, we can upgrade it on it. Yeah, just come up with some money to come.
Yes, sir.
All right.
For me, thank you very much.
Under the alarm we've got here. So Ron Orlando. You're now up. Thank you for your patience. It's a little late in my country, but Ron is the. Vice President. General Affairs Comcast. And um. To kind of get you up to speed, I I won't take it center away from them, but. Um. You guys know that we've been working on, we're trying to come up with a solution for our internet needs and knowledge. And we've been working with Harvey. We got a border to border grant. For the Twin Lakes area approved in December. Uh which they think they can start constructing on next. You two, four to next year. You got it in December, but it's still gonna be a year plus off to get that worked in. Um I have been working for quite some time with with various people in county and state. League and last mile providers, Comcast being one of them. You'll remember that last summer I brought it to both Comcast who would finish out our city for about fourteen million dollars. Uh about two weeks ago, we got a call from Comcast and we started our pencil. We would like to partner with you. And we think we can do the rest of your city for about eight and a half million dollars. And we think we can get in on a very aggressive proposal, like the border to border grant. Uh March second is the deadline for that. And they took the initiative to do the preliminary work, notification of current providers. Uh to make sure that uh they can proceed. And so in the last couple of days, we've had conversations with the county. Um. Had conversations with Comcast. And we are looking to move forward. The proposal, so Ron has agreed to come here and talk us about. Uh the company, about the proposal, and then we can answer questions when we're on. We've met the council. Um. I'm gonna turn it over to you. And uh give us your best.
Mister Mayor, thank you, Congressman, and staff. Um so this goes back to five years ago when Mayor first. Propried to please come and build a little city. Well, this mayor looks really expensive. Uh and but he he has never taken, just put off the gas and been your biggest cheerleader to try to get us. Do a guess. I would tell you. You are seeing right now federally, you stretch dollars over throwing dollars worth of money. And so this is, this is why we're now, because there's an opportunity to public. Public private partnership between Comcast and state. And the county and the city stack the money so that way we can build out. So um and want to thank the city manager and his staff too. You guys have been fantastic. Literally. As you all know, they did the first round of grants several months ago and now a second round come up. March second is the due date. But there are some timelines we need to meet and and also it's it's it gets scored by the state in terms of the grid. And so um and we'll get into that real fast, but I I think. The key here is a public private partnership that we want to have with the city. And going forward, it's important for me to be here, be here for the entire trip. Especially with any problem as you get down to the revolution group. So let me um I'm gonna go to the, to the uh very quick. PowerPoint, I'm lost. I'm sure I'm not gonna skip a little part of the PowerPoint if it even, you can see it. But if you go to page three, that will show you the map and then actually. And I want to be very clear, we are gonna bring in one. Um you're gonna have a fiber optic network that will be built. It will be fiber to every household and every dozens that we pass in the city. In the map that you see above. Um it will be gig symmetrical. So right out of the gate, you you will have gig symmetrical speeds to your residents. So we already offer one point two gigahertz. Downstreams to customers. A lot of customers don't really need a lot of upstream if you're a gamer, if you're a big business, you do. But your network, because it will come online with all fiber right out of the gate, it would be one gig symmetrical of end damage. So it's state of the art. You're getting the, what we talked about is Ferrari.
Lamborghini.
So let's talk about real quick. The the breakdown and this is what we've been going back and forth with the city board. So it'd be twelve hundred and twenty seven total passings. With a a cost of about eight point five million dollars. Comcast would be putting in five, uh almost five million of them. We will be looking to stack um a hundred and fifty thousand of the local county Harper money. And then another eight hundred K from H R A from the county. And then uh we will be requesting out of the state broadband office, two point five, the, I'm sorry, million. Uh further offset. So that would be the breakdown. So if you take a look at the percentage contributions. Thirty percent, we said, look, thirty percent gives us the highest amount of points to for the scoring. After that, you get, you know, obviously far less if we uh ask for more money from the state. So that's gonna give us the most amount of points to improve. So Mayor, is there anything else you want to throw in there real fast?
Uh. No, I think the, again, that thirty percent is is. The minimum and that that's the most point.
Most points.
If anything more, if you add thirty percent, the depth points from your. Um the nine hundred and fifty thousand is the city county, our H R A fund, county hold, but the city H R A fund. That we've had sitting there relatively idle for years. And a hundred and fifty thousand we talked about with Martha Grant that the county has made available. We uh we actually won the city and local county return their van. So we're using a hundred and fifty thousand of our original brand to go for the R B package from last year. And the county is giving us on a first come, first paid. That's the opportunity to apply for that money that's returned from another city. That's again, part of the urgency here is. We have to be first in line to get that next grant from from the county. So that nine hundred and fifty, that eleven percent is our H R A funds and the county Harper funds. And then near five million dollars, fifty nine, I think, very dreadful. And appreciate from Comcast to make this successful.
So the March second deadline is for the nine fifty or for the two point five?
Yeah, then March second is for the eight and a half. That's the, the, the request will be for the two and a half. State. So if the package is eight, eight point five million, we are asking the state for two point five.
And that puts through March second.
And that's the application estimate.
And the other deadline to give the home money for a hundred fifty.
County money is, we have, we've been told to put the request in right away. Their deadlines are the February twenty.
That's. Yeah, one two weeks.
It it's uh, I said, two weeks ago, we we didn't know any of this was happening and and. We jumped into the bathroom. So we have been in contact with the county. Uh Comcast has been contacted with the county. We found out about that and invited ourselves into the meeting and. Said, if you're doing this for us, let let us know what's going on. So uh. The county has has said that that we believe this can be best planned. Uh we meet the criteria and Natalie's been good at downloading the application forms. Uh necessary for the state application, the two and a half million and two county applications of a hundred and fifty thousand each. Um both of those deadlines and then in our third ask is the county is the H R A members. H R A meets on February twenty eighth and the county uh Harper Group meets on February twenty eighth. So we'll find out about that. And then two days later, we have to have the application done.
Uh company, all there's new real there, just to put a finer point on the application too. If you get additional points to show the need in one, so literally any. Businesses or residents that wanna sign a letter or do a letter of support and say, hey, you really need an internet. Right today here, that helps your grant as well. So any sort of. And we'll work with your chamber of Congress. We usually will get a letter from the Chamber of Commerce. We've done some of these brands. Uh, we've got Washington County, we've also got Tennessee County. So we kind of know how to do it, but we'll work with the city and any sort of businesses or. Any customers, quite frankly, put in letters of support helps go through your applications.
And along those lines, we we have templates that we've been providing. So I will be providing one on behalf of the city and then we're also going to make those available. Through our website for any residents or businesses that want to express the interest and the need for the internet. The more support we get, that's all going to be included in Comcast presentation to the state, uh, Dean. Uh, so if we can encourage people in the next two weeks to. Uh, take that letter and put their name to it or craft one based on that. Uh, the more letters we get, the better it is. Uh, the other thing that uh. We have found effective over the years in getting these grants. Uh, we've given out contact information for the Department of Economic Development, Dean, organization. And uh, they they know now then pretty well. So people that. Want to write a letter, they'll put that in the package. If you want to call Dean and say, this is the time to go forward to now then. All of that's appreciated. If nothing else, Dean will say, give them the grant until they quit calling. They may, they might be close right now. But but this will be something where, again, if we can encourage people. To take that template and write their own letters and get those to the city uh, within a week or so. Um, we would appreciate that. The Council of Five.
So they, what you're asking them, if residents, which I can hear a lot from, excuse me, uh, if residents wanted to do this, they could either pick up. Or write their own letter, but it comes back to the city and management. So we write.
No, it uh, you have to draft that letter. It gets addressed to the people that make the signal in the state order to board. Well, there is a.
Oh Natalie, could I copy that? We, next time.
We we will send that out to all councilmen. And we'll put it on the website. And if somebody is on Facebook and wants to say, hey, by the way, if there's getting.
Yeah.
We just, we'll have, we'll have the templates for businesses and residents on the internet. Uh, you can just copy those, but it's always nice. We can take that and craft one and say, here's why I need it. Even say, my family, we work from home, we school from home, we. We love gaming, whatever it is, particularly your family, but says, we really need internet now. And that would use that as part of the package we present. And again, when you put that with their fifty nine percent. And and our eleven percent, that's a very aggressive package for the state. And one of the things that you're looking for, it's a map. They're scoring. They they don't care if it's now then or. Well, whatever city, they're looking at the map. And they're saying, these people afford the most points. We have to consider them, John.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Alders.
Just help me understand again, the eight hundred thousand. Is in the bank and you just need to spend it and you got to go after the. The uh, hundred and fifty? Or what is the possibility to get the two and a half million and then we don't get the eight hundred or a hundred?
Yeah, we will know on the, on those two before the applications to. And they will be continued. The eight hundred thousand is our H R A funds that the county collects for us. Foundation put in every month. Um, that's money that we've built up over the years.
That's.
And we have to ask them, well, we have to get permission from the county to use. So we have an application process. That's here's what we want to do.
A week. The money is there.
Funny that.
A hundred and fifty, you got to apply for.
And that money is there. We just have to get it applied.
If you don't get the hundred and fifty, could you have it somewhere?
No.
We just spent a hundred and twenty on that guy.
There you go, yep.
And I'm pretty sure the people rather have the internet than sick of it.
I I have been reassured by the county that that. Could be a solid. They're going to work with us along with Comcast and make sure that application is in. And we've been reassured by the county that should that be a problem. If that were a problem, we would work with Comcast to see what we have available and where they might go. When we first approached this, um. We, it looked like between us and the county, we have a million and one five. Um, and when that didn't turn out to be what the county was able to come up with. Comcast stepped up to another two percent. And I'm not assuming they're going to take another one percent. Like that. At this point.
I don't lose this over here in this house.
Neither does the county. Oh.
Good. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Bryant.
Just to clarify, the hundred and fifty thousand is ARPA fund.
Correct.
ARPA is the American Rescue Plan Grant Fund.
Correct.
So those are the funds that the city received that that Minnie Jaeger mentioned in her Treasury Report. That says the city received those ARPA funds twenty one and twenty two and need to be appropriated by the.
That is not true.
That's not.
These are ARPA funds that the county was given. Minnie Jaeger was talking about is funds we received at the city. These are the sixty nine million that the county received and they designated three million to broadband in cities. County. So each city was granted a hundred and fifty thousand dollars available to them. And it's only can be used on unserved or underserved areas. And most fifteen sixteen of the cities don't have those. Sixty lots do. Are trying to get those funds back from the city that can't even. So one of those cities did return their funds. And that's why they told us first come, first served, yeah, first in line will be considered the ones to get those funds. Um. So, yes, we will be able to swing this, we will not lose it over there.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Miranda.
So question on the hundred and fifty thousand in ARPA funds, if another city, if we are able to receive. A refunded hundred and fifty thousand from one or two cities. Does that mean then we can draw down less on our H R A funds?
No, you can only use. A hundred and fifty, you have to use a different product. We cannot double up on a hundred and fifty.
Okay.
So our first a hundred and fifty, we we had uh. Planned on using for the Arby project, it was approved in December. The second hundred and fifty from the city that returned their funds would be for the Comcast fund.
Alright, thank you for that clarification.
Another hundred and fifty, we have to have a third project.
Alright, thank you very much. And and then just for my. Again, because some things are are garbled. Um, so. If we're looking at these numbers and the city county contribution. Technically, none of that money comes from our budget. It's the ARPA funds from the county and the H R A funds, which is. Um, if everybody looks at their property tax statement. On their property tax statement, there's a a dollar amount. And I think there are special assessments, if I'm not, I could be wrong, but there's an H R A line on your property taxes. And that's where that money comes first. So the city technically. Wouldn't, it would not cost the city anything to do this at this point.
That is correct. The the only thing it will cost the city is. Um, if we'd ever determined that we had some other use for H R A funds. We'll have spent those down um, for this project. And we'll have about twenty three thousand left, I believe. At the end of this, but we didn't want to completely drain it in case there was some program. But right now, because of the way now then is developed, we don't, we don't have H R A. Needs qualifying needs like most cities do. And this is something that does qualify for H R A usage. Um, but you're right in that it will not affect levy, it will not increase taxes. This is money. If we don't use the ARPA funds from the county, we just don't get it. Um, you know, use the H R A, we haven't in how many years? Pretty much since we've become a city, we did use some of it for uh, the Arby project last night. But other than that, we uh. We don't have many qualifying events in now then that are H R A funds available for. So it would be without any extra expenses to to. Did it now?
Alright, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, one last question on the H R A. What is our existing budget or balance? And you may have said it and I missed it.
Eight hundred and twenty three thousand.
Eight hundred and twenty three thousand. Okay, so we're leaving twenty three thousand. Alright, thank you.
Hopefully that doesn't. We're the wrong way around, but we. We wanted to have something left to you there.
No, and no, and like you said, because originally you were at the. You're at thirty, you're going to ask the state thirty two percent and we're talking. We want to really get to the best, we get the most amount of points, getting it down to the thirty percent, I think, state. Why really would be brought to wait for more money on the table to make sure we we get it? But like I said, it's a perfect.
Here, here's the profit business.
The other thing too is what you get, you will get franchise fees from any of the video products down to the two. So that's the other thing. Support with uh.
Jason, just so again, we're on. Councilmember Alders.
Future developments. Uh, so one of the things we will will do is work very closely with. The mayor and the city. So we have what's called a biz dev team, or biz dev team works with your economic development team. And we will, we'll set up a cadence, it's either every six months, every couple of months, but. What we want to do is any new developments come in online, we want to do, we want to get in a joint group. We want to do, uh, we want to get in there and lay the fiber as soon as possible. And and that's the other thing too, is we're big on not wanting to upset the right away because, look, we know how much it's. It's valuable to the city and the county. So if you're in there or if we find out you guys are doing tour work, we want to get in at the same time, we're going to do as much as we can. And work with those developers, right? I think it will put our stuff in before. I would say it's a lot of time.
And that's something we talked about with the city, the new developments, big way to add for. A kind as we put in and involve all the utilities. If they can be there when the utility is going, the the joint trench, that's going to save. Give it a forty percent of cost. Uh, this is, we had a. The speed of installation, uh, we have some information on on the potential for. When this. Presuming uh, the application is approved, the parent application. Uh, it's actually a fairly aggressive install as well. But there would be a combination of trenching and wires where they can use stability poles that exist. For those areas, they can get in quicker because they can go pole to pole. Those areas that don't have poles, obviously, we've mentioned those areas where it makes sense to trench. Avoid the poles, it'll be a company. So. The the understanding would be, maybe getting ahead of your script here. The application has to begin by four o'clock on March second. Um, the expected announcing is June of this year by the state. And that being said, the last grant was expected to be announced in September and announced at the municipal center. If they announce in June like they expect to. Then the rest of the summer would be engineering right away, um. Identification of poles versus. Permitting the types of things necessary, construction likely to start second quarter of twenty fifth. No, spring top point four. Much of the work being done in that summer finished up.
And obviously, it, you know, we all know the weather. It can kill us or it can help us. Uh, so. If we have a mild winter next, 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 winter, fall and winter. We can get started early, we'll get started. If you take a look at the map, so we are literally right on the border with the mall. And we're finishing Ramsey. So we'll be bringing all of our fiber up from Ramsey coming north. Uh, from the southern part of the city moving up north. And we'll work very closely with you. If you look on a slide. Because we've obviously done this uh, in a number of communities already. Uh, we will create a micro site, we'll work with you and put it on onto your site. If you go to. Four hundred and eight.
He's been on the camera.
And so you'll take a look, this is the screenshot. So these are the communities we're working in right now. So Rogers, Dayton, Rainy Valley, Missouri, Wyoming, Minnesota and Springfield, Kansas. What we do is we create a micro site. And well, and because you're going to get questions that's we're digging up. Uh, what we will do is uh, put wangers on all the houses. We will do contacting the customer that's we're putting five. Bringing fiber rates to their premises, but they're like, who's this contractor working with? We might be ours. We'll work with you guys real closely and we'll create this micro site that will track the project. In the micro sites, you don't have to worry anymore. Oh my gosh, when are they coming to my, and it'll tell you when you're uh, when we. So we'll have all that. We've got sixty years. We will celebrate sixty years. We operate in. Uh, thirty eight states plus the district Columbia is the largest internet router in the country. So we're bringing all that machinery with us and all of the fiber and technology. Uh, here's a really great factoid. We double our network capacity every thirty minutes. Because we're constantly reinventing and reinvesting in the middle. So we're flipping out electronics, as you guys know, you can't even get a laptop in the last fifteen years, right? So we're flipping out our electronic, we're, we're, we're doubling that in a quarter, in thirty minutes. And what's great about it is during the pandemic, we didn't have any of our customers complain of waiting to get you. The, the people that live in the European Union have a lot of problems. They will actually have to have provider to gate back or streams. Uh, in content because they didn't have enough fiber. We don't have that problem because we're a fiber rich company. And the other thing too is we've got our own supply chain. We can utilize that some of the smaller providers are kind of held up by. You know, there's only, you know, Corning and and Conso can do all fiber. Because we buy it in such a big bondy for our network, we're able to, you know, feed more. Today, ship us some of those fiber here. That's the other things that we're going to bring to the table that a lot of the other smaller providers can't do. So, Mr. Mayor.
I'll leave it all.
City offices.
No. They, they are not allowed into areas that Arby already has. Red box town. So the areas that are big in Southwest and Mountain Lakes and. And this portion of the commercial district are off limits again because. These monies can only be used in unserved, underserved areas and others. So if you go to that first map where you're looking at on page three. You can see the dividing line of the commercial district there. And the neighborhoods around Quinn Lake. So you are in this district. Um, here since across the road in this district, the church is not. But that's where the dividing line. Right, and so all those homes around, you can see them. County eighty two and county sixty five all along the lake. That's the grant that Arby got last season. And their constructions is, is going to start. Bob, twenty four as well. So there'll be a lot of, a lot of construction. Lot of right away permits, and we should tell a lawyer.
It doesn't, we can't apply for any state homes for that Arby area, but it doesn't prevent us from going in, building in there.
I think the unique thing, we were talking earlier today. Um, when Arby came in down in this area. They would ask you if you wanted the fiber and if you didn't sign up for it, you didn't get it back to the home. If I heard you right, Ron, you're going to every home in these areas. So.
Every home.
You may not want Comcast service. But the fiber will be to your door. And you want to sell your house, we will have fiber here. So even if you don't sign up to the service. No, that fits. And if you have a metro. Tension. Metro game service.
You'll have, we'll be insured on turning around the work.
Uh, can I ask on the map on that third page? The darker spots in the southern half of the street, what are, what are those, you know?
We can, we can set up all the biz dev folks to did it. We can, we can set up all the biz dev close to digit.
You're doing, I was trying to make here, but um, we're not excluding any of the neighborhoods for some reason, I don't know if that technically, we've got the likelihood of unserved and that underserved, uh, or if there's some reason or the pocket in that, I wouldn't understand that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
I do recall that we were going through this, and they were bringing the map together, the maps. Show the spots that were were underserved, but we're showing it served, and that probably where all this pocket, but yeah, they they need to do very well, they need to be addressed, because I'm one of them.
Yeah. Well, so that it is the absentee data or exactly, I said, if they go either instead that they have service. And you don't, you, you need to let state broadband, so in the S C, because technically, we can use any state or federal money to bill out those areas, because it's it shows in the market, so.
You you will help us if we identify those, you'll you'll find out what these are on here.
Yeah, I, I think Dan's right, uh, we'll, we'll double check, we'll sort of follow it to more, we'll get it.
Because we need to clarify, to clarify, underserved being less than a hundred megabits, I remember like D day. Which that should be anybody, practically anybody that's not in the market right now.
Yeah, and the other thing too is, remember, we can't use the state or federal, but doesn't mean that we can't go build.
But yeah, no, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just reemphasizing.
Our, our proposal is to build everything inside those projects.
Yeah, I'm just reemphasizing that.
Yeah, we wouldn't be able to use any state or federal money to build the generator.
I just, I just wanted to, you know, again, say that a few months ago, we were looking at fourteen million dollars in multiple years. So this is a huge change. To go to drop eight and a half. They have ours, this is eleven percent of the money we have available to us. And you'd be talking about this again.
Yeah, and like I said, we can shave, here's the other thing, because we, we operate we, we have, it's called the Midwest region, we operate out of State Paul. We operate Minnesota, Kansas, Missouri, and Wisconsin. All four states have gone in these grant processes. So I have experience doing Kansas and New Jersey, and the well, Wisconsin. One of the things like the city of, uh, Springell, Kansas, with, look, we want you best, that we're gonna give you one blanket permit to do in the city, because we knew, if we're, we're good, we sit down on them, we fill them on maps, and and so forth, we we track them. But they're like, we just need the service, just get in here, you know, so we'll work with you. But we can shave stuff off on permitting schedule, we'll be, we'll do that with we keep it in your shape.
Well, Ron, what else you want to?
No, the only other thing I'd say, Mayor, is, uh, go to slide seven, so look. We know that there's a digital equity issue. There's a lot of income-constrained families, a little bit over eleven years ago, we, we, we announced, uh, product offering called Internet Ascend. So for any income-constrained family, anyone that's on any sort of federal or state programs, similar chip, food stamps, they're able to get nine ninety-five, fifty megabits by ten from us, or they can pay twenty-nine ninety-five for a hundred million. Here, for low-income, income-constrained, um, families.
That might have just changed. I heard Megan this morning said that's seventy-five.
No, she was wrong, yeah.
But fifty, fifty makes for nine ninety-five.
But here's the great thing about this, that we've done. So there's another program, yet another pot of money, it's called A C P, maybe I can see. Formal connectivity program. Federal government, the F C C, will give any family that's income-constrained thirty dollars a month. It, it does not, it, it's to the technology, to any provider, to the family, to use towards our internet. So we have two products that will make it for your own dollar for their internet. So want to make sure you know that that's something we've brought to the table. And we've had it for over ten years, and we've often, you're in the essentials for ten years. But A C P knew, that was, uh, came online in January of this past, no, not this a year ago, twenty twenty-two.
So your two products, nine ninety-five and twenty-nine ninety-five?
Make it free for any.
Did I get thirty bucks?
What's that?
If I get thirty bucks, I'm gonna go with twenty-nine then.
Of course. So that's another, and you'll see there's a lot of material in there, um, about the Internet Essentials program, and like that's one that they, we, I'm an assistant company, uh, some of the others.
And, and so this is the phone service, you, you're gonna talk to us about.
Yeah.
So this is the product that we go into the home.
Yep, so that's one of our modems, we, that mode of all of our modems. Um, if, if you wrap one of our rooms, that room is also a router. But everything comes through this little box, so I'll show you. So this is probably like a newer version called an X B eight, and all the antennas are built, the Wi-Fi is all built inside of here. And the network has so much A I built into it, and you have an app that connects to this. And it will tell you where there's dead spots in your home, and then we also have little things called pods. So you take a pod, if you've got a bad signal in one bedroom, you go put it up there, and it boosts the signal from this. So the coax line will just go into the back of this. Um, and then you have ethernet ports, if you want to actually plug in a, a hard wire in to, if you have an ethernet connection. And then you have two new phone ports, that you can buy our Comcast Internet Voice product. And what you do is you plug in here, then plug into any outlet and a reverse wire your entire house, so you can use you don't have to use sensory, like in Oregon, to be able to use your phone, like told us. So we'll have home automation, which, water sensors, the whole gamut, and we, the other thing we do is invite you to come to one of our stores, Queen Rapids is probably the closest store. And you can come and see all the home automation stuff, we have water sensors that go near your hot water tank. Um, wireless cameras, four K cameras, uh, that do sound and four K video. All the, you know, fire and, um, all the security system and stuff with it as well, so you're gonna have that, plus we have our wireless cellular server called Xfinity Mobile, and so the more and more service you can buy, the more it takes off, the discounts you get on your
And you had, you had mentioned, Megan had mentioned that the council invited you to go down to one of your stores and and get it down the street.
Yeah, we'd be happy to touch that up for you, and I'm gonna, we'll show you all the stuff that you can actually try it and
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Brian. So I'm curious what so literally, I've heard it, but I know that's gonna be an issue right now, then where people have very long driveways, you're telling me, everyone you're gonna lay the fiber to the door, even if I've got a fifteen-hundred-foot drive. Just making sure.
But we asked that question, you know. I mean, that was one of the, the first discussions we had last year with, um, one of the recent discussions with Comcast was because of the large lots out there, that's why I was talking. There's gonna be a lot, and we know with Arby, they did that, that there was a minimum fee to the residents, and during their introductory package, you have this fee and a, a five-year contract. And you could get installed. Well, however far you went from the road. If you didn't take him up on the initial offer, then it was the first foot it's ten dollars for the bet. And your four hundred dollars, you know, you're over twenty-four thousand dollars for that mention. And so that was one of the questions I had. I'm looking at these numbers, fifty-nine percent, and every home gets it, and you get it all the way to their house. And you say, yeah.
Then what's the average cost, user cost for basic internet? How fast is it?
Great question, so you have, I also provide you the rate, what we call the rate card. That's, it's an F C C regulated, um, card. So if you wanted to buy our internet basic service rate, then and this, the rate card that I have for you, the one from Anopa, Camp, when the boat rode and ran through. Um, if you were to buy, you could bet right now, just buy itself, it'd be ninety ninety-three dollars. But that's what, if, if we have, I'll pay, if not, we're three dollars. That would be one gig service. Now, here's the thing, we're, because we have so many pricing points, because here's the thing, more than Chinese stuff different than they ever have. And so that's why, go to that rate card, you can see all the different, all the different price points. Right now, if you were to come online as a new customer right now, we're doing, so if you bought internet connectivity for once, just internet, two hundred meg down for you, ten up. It would be twenty-four ninety-five. But then if you added a Xfinity mobile phone with that, we will give you a discount, so it'd only be five dollars. And we got, and it's a twenty-four month. And no extra money for it. So that's what I'm saying, if, if you, if we, if you bundle stuff, that's where you start to say, put your, your red thing down every month. That includes prices, includes the mobile, the equipment, is it?
And that's the new?
No. Well, this, the new, the offer we have right now, so if you ever call in and say you want emotional discount for internet, or move up with a cellular phone to go with it, it would be only five dollars a month. No.
Including your cell phone?
That's the deal right now, now. So it's gonna be over here, so I, I can't tell you what to do. I don't wanna go, I don't wanna say too much.
You're just coming up from Ramsey, and that boat, or the boat broke.
I'm very excited.
So with I think it's an Arvin, there was a, when you looked at it, with the driveways and everything, or their contract, fiber contract, is what I think I heard you say.
That's what I recall.
So is there any kind of contact that way because of some offer that's going to look at it?
So you can't, I mean, it's so look, that private property, people can say, I don't want you in my yard, now, that can be an issue. Uh, if someone says, I don't want, I mean, putting a fiber off the cable in my yard, even though it may not be turned on. You could, you could run into that, but like I will tell you from the experiences that we've gotten from, we literally have people chasing our trucks down. That's what they're doing. It's not, uh, don't put this line in, it's like, we want the service up right now. And I don't think that's a surprise to people.
So they're willing to bring it to every home in the that area, unless somebody said, don't come on that. And that wouldn't cost them anything unless they sent it.
The other thing I had, I gave you there, is that's the talking remote next to you, Mayor. So it's nice, my father lives in another state, Ohio, appropriate venue. Um, and we have, it's called the talking remote, so there's a little microphone in there. All you do is talk into it. And you'll, you'll say turn on the Super Bowl, and it'll automatically auto tune to the Super Bowl. Or if you'd say, show me movies with Kevin Costner. And it will automatically show you, not only on the Comcast Xfinity platform, it will go to Netflix and everything else, it will show you every movie that's ever out. I, the A I that we built into the back of our network is just amazing. To the point where it's, it's not there yet, but it's also gonna be able to tell the difference of the users in the house. So like, you may pick up the remote and say, and then your kid will say something, it will know that that's John picking it up, and it will also figure out your viewing habits, and it'll say, oh, you recently watched um, you recently watched Top Gun. You might be interested in these movies. So that's where the A I that we put in and invested in the backend, and this is just incredible. Like when my father comes, he's like, I love it, he thinks he's finding a girl, he's got one all his fingers going in different directions, he's got off right at that, but he can put that little microphone button, and he says to, uh, turn on the Cleveland Idiots. It's crazy.
Uh, my kids do it all the time.
Oh, yeah.
Can, can you put a parental control on that? Come here, daddy watch last. Councilmember Alders.
Quest for action, what's?
So the request for action is, um, multi-fold. Um, so we take a look at the first request for action, in, uh, N V one. Again, be, sorry, N V one. Um, approval and resolution authorizing the approval of the border-to-border grant application to extend broadband to twelve-hundred twenty-seven passing, that's the title. And residence and business, and the uncertain, uncertain areas is now then. That's one. And approval of the resolution included here authorizing the use of H R A funds provide high-speed internet to residents and businesses in partnership with Comcast, no complaints given, no. So that first request is uh, to partner with Comcast to apply for the border-to-border, and then request uh, H R A funds from the county. And you'll see, subsequent to that, the two resolutions. One, that we have to give to the county saying we at the council have agreed to use our H R A funds, three hundred thousand dollars of our H R A funds for this purpose. The second one there is, um, to work with Comcast, and I would be allowed to continue to work with Comcast to get this application in and up and running. And, uh, there's a third resolution. We have to work on the the title there. But this, this would go to the state, and we, our partnership with Comcast um, still apply to the border, the border there. So that's the app for Congress. N V two is the ask for hundred and fifty thousand from the county ARPA funds for our Arby project. The one we're asking for here are the agreement to use the H R A funds the partnership with border-to-border grant. And then the application that will go to the, um, state for the request for border borders. So I believe, and Rod, the current thing is different there. The request would be, as it says on the R T A there on the bottom, so that would be the motion. And then the subsequent resolution would be provided to the county and the state, and to Comcast saying, yes, they're looking for it.
Yeah, and we included in that, obviously, is what we talked about, any other lawyers you can get from businesses. We'll, we'll, we'll reach out to the chamber, but if there's any other businesses or, um, entities that want to weigh in, it's just gonna bolster our, our, our grant, uh, to get the grant, and that's what we need, we really need that.
And I, I I would, uh, ask as part of this, that we authorize staff to put together a letter that we can issue to the businesses that are included in this area. Um, and then authorize the templates that we have been provided to go on a website, be provided to the city residents that they request.
It will include that on, on the filings to stay in that one implication.
But that's, that's why I
We got a quick term.
I've been working on it so many years, I really really want to see this kind of provision. And so that's why I'm willing to continue to, to work so that we I can relieve any of the excess work that that I can do, that the staff doesn't have to, to make sure this hit their, through your time.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Ald. Make a motion to approve the obligation of the approval of the border-to-border grant to extend broadband to, uh, twelve-hundred and and to that is uh, residents of Vinson, and
And which are very nine and. Uh authorize the use of the HRA funds to provide. In the areas now and in partnership with Comcast, so counting in the city.
You have a motion, Councilmember Aldis.
Well, with that, um. Include the motion is you have staff. Uh work on the letters and on the website and see uh. Really works to residents understand what's for them. Second.
All right, we have a motion. And a. Second. Any other discussion? The council's uh okay with me continuing to work on this. All right, any discussion, Councilmember Rabeau?
Yes, thank you, Mister Mayor. Um. While I cannot vote on this, I fully support. Um moving forward with this. I think it's gonna be. Um. Very beneficial to our residents and our businesses. I wanna thank the mayor and. Previously, Councilmember Brian working on this issue. Um if it would not have been for their continued involvement. We would not be here today. And um I I think that's very important to uh. To understand and to recognize. That uh if it wasn't for the work of Mayor Pilon and and previously Councilmember Brian. Uh we would not have, we would not be here. And I don't believe we would ever see anything. Uh coming towards us. Um such as monument monumental as this. So thank you very much.
Thank you for that. I I will say too that over the years, we've had. Broadband committees that helped us to be. CenturyLink, our dog program up many years ago. Certainly the Arvick program the last two years. Um and and the. The interest that has been expressed. To the county and the state from our resident. Uh continues to be valuable and has been valuable up to this point. There's many residents who. Have uh put a lot of time into this as well, so we look forward to that over these next two weeks to make sure that we. We get that same support from the residents. All right, any other comments? Seeing and hearing that, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. 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 Pose. Motion carries. We're going forward. Thank you for your patience and. Very significant. Move forward in our city.
We happy to throw the first shovel at Durbin.
I haven't had many of those in the paper, only with the shovel there. Yeah, I knew you.
I was just gonna say, thank you, Ron. I appreciate the time and look forward to working with you also if it's uh. Today and and covered a lot of territories and just appreciate you being here and spending the extra time with us to go through this stuff. So thank you.
Ron and I started working together at least five years ago.
Yeah.
I was talking, you know, working with Kate Enthring before that. Megan and Andrea and Carly and. It's it's been a good. Two weeks.
And your staff's been incredible these last couple weeks, just doing all the getting the maps. I mean, if there are a lot that's gone into it. We've got a lot to go to get the application in, and we're gonna work with your goalpost to get, make sure. We get this.
All right, thank you very much, and thank you team for us.
Mister Mayor.
Councilmember Rabeau.
Um I would also like to thank staff on this. Um you know, we've been, you've been dealing with it for a long time. Um it's amazing what our existing staff and previous interim administrator Boils has done. In a, what, a year and a half? Um being new to the city, being new to the to the discussion, um being new to the. Technology. I worked with Natalie today, and it's like, I'm so grateful she's there. Um but thank you to staff and all that they've done to make sure that this is continued. Um to move forward and to the benefit of our residents and businesses. So thank you.
All right, we can move on here. The next item. You'll see in your packet, ten B two. This is what we passed last summer. Um. And so we are. Trying to utilize this. Um. In our application for hundred fifty thousand in county ARPA funds. For separate projects for the Arvick project from the Lake. As many we have not gotten yet from the county. But we're going to submit this to suggest to. Let you be aware of what we're doing there because that Arvick project is going forward as well. And so this is something we did last summer for those that weren't on council at the time. Um and we'll be using this in our grant application for the. Other set of. All right, any questions on that? All right, and then uh. I believe it's our last item here. Uh down the hill, we, you know, we now are a part of small cities. Uh leading Minnesota cities and metro cities. And so those are all, all have lobbyists that work the. Capital for us. Uh small cities in particular, because there's certain things that we don't get because one of the five thousand residents. And so NSA funds for our roads, we don't qualify for. Small cities is lobbying. So the things we've been sending you. From the small cities, and here's the bills that are going through and. If you saw the way the stuff they they're running at a pace that they've never run. At the state level before. They're trying to get things through uh before any. Anybody dies of a heart attack or decides that you're lying and changes the mix in the legislative stage. Um. One of the big things is the small cities are looking out for things the big cities get that we don't. And how we can get that legislation. One of the things they're trying to get funded. Is consistent road support. Because we don't qualify for NSA road monies. They're trying to get some dedicated fund. That can go to small cities. Every once in a while, they'll give us a little bit. But there's nothing year after year. So. Typically, what you see from small cities, the things they're working on in particular affects small city. And then they'll also get, here's a bunch of the bills that are coming through. Um. The metro cities has a similar thing. Here's a thing that affects the seven seven county metropolitan area. Here's the bills that we're most focused on. Maybe maybe are affecting greater than some. So as we get that information from those, we'll continue to forward that to the citizens. Uh the small cities in conjunction, I believe, in Minnesota cities. Have what they call a day on the hill, which you often go and do your own lobbying, go and see your. Local legislators in their offices. Get some training on how you can. Be aware of what's going through the legislative process and how you can adapt on that. On behalf of your city. Um so this is something we would like to participate in. Um. And offer it to the rest of the council. Anybody who wants to go down on that date, you can see the agenda. And the schedule is attached here. It's ninety-nine dollars plus. Boss. My events. If you wanna participate on that. We would need to know because we'd have to register. If you're available, wanna participate on March ninth. Um. Please. Um. Let Scott know as soon as possible. We'll get signed up and then we need to encircle whatever it tends to get done. This will be an opportunity to. Work on behalf of our city along with. I believe Minnesota cities and. Small cities in particular, I'm sure. In metro cities, there's on a different day. But it's something that you can learn other people that are involved in. Leadership in both of those organizations. And more particularly. How we. Impact legislative problems. Are there questions on that?
Mister Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan.
I just have a question. I wanted to approve the resolution to. Um approve the administrative mayor, any council members to end the city day on the hill on Thursday, March ninth. At a cost of ninety-nine dollars for first pilot.
And a motion from Councilmember Brian.
I'll say it.
A second from Councilmember Aldis, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing that, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries.
Mayor.
Member Brian.
We just wanna make sure we don't miss anything. There was no motion or any any. Request for council action needed for ten B two.
Uh ten B two is. Arvick, and that is just to uh. The um staff will be putting in the application based on the. Prove what we put in last.
Mister Mayor.
And for Brian.
There's nothing else to make the motion to.
There's one more than me. No.
About the approach for training.
All right, we are adjourned. Thanks very much.
Great, everybody. Right.